I'd like to say good evening. I'd like to open up the. Planning. I'll open up the planning commission meeting. I want to introduce. Um, staff. From my right to left. We've got George Weber. From Madison. Bob Short from Bowling Green. Percy Arminer from Matapanai. Carol Horton from Port Royal. And Scott Sullivan from Western Carolina. Um, I want to introduce the staff. Greg Pendleton, planner. Chris McKenzie, county attorney. And Lisa Zink. I can't get that right. Administration assistant. I'll leave you please stay in for us because there's some flag. Can I have approval on, um, minutes? And we don't have any this time. Okay, um, our next agenda is SB dash oh five twenty twenty two. Can I have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant's requesting preliminary plat approval for Pendleton, section eleven. A preliminary plat SB oh one twenty nineteen for section eleven was previously approved by the planning commission at its April twenty fifth twenty nineteen meeting. The original design of section eleven has been changed since previously approved plat. Changes to this plat have been shown in red. Fire chief raised some questions regarding the preliminary plat. Applicant provided a response that we feel is sufficient. Most of the concerns are site plan related. Staff believes the preliminary plat is in conformance with the requirements of the ordinance and does not feel that there will be significant changes to the plats when construction plans are finalized. If significant changes are identified or necessary, a revised plan would be required for a subsequent review and approval by the planning commission.
Is it? Thank you. Can we get a motion on it? That's P dash oh five twenty twenty two.
Can we ask any questions? Before we make a motion? So basically, Craig, you're saying that. This new revised plan is very similar to the old?
Yes, there were just a few minor changes made to it on the layout.
So if there were any major changes, you'd have to bring it back before planning again?
Yes, if there were major changes to it before final plating, then we would have to bring another preliminary plat back to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Pendleton. I see where the surrounding areas, has any construction begun in the surrounding areas? I, I can see from the aerial that we have. That is fifty two eighty. ADH. Have buildings on site. But I don't see where any of the others that are around.
Um, so they have a permit to, for land disturbance to get that section of the neighborhood ready, sections five through eleven, I believe it was.
Right.
Um, so that construction's underway, they've begun construction of houses in section five and section seven B as of recently. Um, so there is plenty of construction around these sections.
Okay, and they're willing to comply with Chief Law's recommendations for the streets so that fire equipment can make ingress and egress?
They have met the statewide building code, the plat was reviewed by the building official. And, uh, the, the comment response letter from the engineer meets the statewide building code for, or statewide fire code, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Can I have a motion, please?
Yes, I would make a motion, sir. Based on this whole subdivision that's over there. It's to be in my neighborhood, so. Know it real well. I see no reason why. We should hold this up unless there are major changes. Based on what has been submitted to us to this date.
So I understand that you. Motioned to approve that, I'd second that motion.
Thank you.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries.
We've got some unfinished business. Um, RZ dash oh one. Two thousand twenty two, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant for RZ zero one twenty twenty two has requested deferral of this rezoning request to the November seventeenth planning commission meeting. To continue to work with staff on further review of the project. Staff believes that acceptance of the deferral would be appropriate.
Can we have a motion to accept the defer?
I would make a motion at this particular time since the applicant has requested this deferral. It's been before us a couple of times, and I think at this particular time it's the right thing to do. Let us defer this to the next meeting.
Three, uh, the applicant's requesting a three month deferral to November seventeenth.
Okay, that's fine.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries.
Um, unfinished business continues, RZ dash oh one twenty twenty two, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this next case, RZ zero five twenty twenty two. The applicant has requested to defer this rezoning request for Bella Woods subdivisions. Scheduled as unfinished business for the August twenty fifth meeting. To the September twenty second planning commission meeting. Uh, motion by the planning commission to accept the deferral would be appropriate at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the request for deferral from the applicant till November seventeenth twenty twenty two.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries.
Public hearing is open. Can I have a protocol, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Purpose of a public. This is with Caroline County Planning Commission. To listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates. And all statements should be adjusted to the chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district. Prior to making their comments. Applicants or their representatives will be allowed fif- allowed fifteen minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested. Keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing has closed, the applicant or his representative. Will be allowed ten minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you.
Before we, uh, start, I'd like to, so I have a. A special exception coming before the commission today. And at this time, I'd like to, uh, I, Scott Sullivan hereby declare and disclose that I have a personal interest. In the special events business, uh, that is subject of the application, special exception oh two. Two zero two two, and therefore disqualify myself as required by the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act. So I just wanted to put that out, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and I'll proceed to the gallery.
Okay, thank you. SXEX dash oh two twenty twenty two, can I staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant's requesting approval of a special exception permit to repeal and replace the previously approved special exception permit SPEX zero four twenty nineteen. For Magnolia, Magnolia Field Special Events Facility. The facility has been open for approximately one point five years after being delayed by the pandemic. They have hosted thirty nine events since opening. The Caroline County Planning Department has not had any violations or complaints regarding this facility. The applicant is requ- requesting to amend the conditions from the previous special exception. Currently, the facility is conditioned to operate on Fridays through Sundays only. This caused the applicant to have to turn down the Caroline County Schools Teacher Appreciation Event as it was to be hosted on a Tuesday. The applicant would like to add operating hours on Mondays through Wednesdays from nine AM to seven PM. Secondly, the applicant currently may host only thirty events in a calendar year and is requesting that that number be raised to a hundred and fifty events with the additional operating days. Finally, the applicant is requesting an amendment to the condition regarding no overnight parking. While the applicant would like for all cars to be removed after an event, sometimes it's not safe to do so. The requested amendment is to allow vehicles parked in designated areas to be left overnight if necessary for safety reasons. The suggested conditions below are the conditions from previously approved special exception permit. With blue highlights noting the applicant's requested changes and staff suggested changes noted in red. The amendments to the conditions are as follows. Condition number seven. Previously stated that the special exception was only valid, valid while the applicant resides on the property. The change in language would be the special exception shall remain valid only while the applicant or immediate family. Members own the property and operate the facility. Condition number eleven. Remains the same with the addition of the extra operating hours from nine AM to seven PM on Monday through Wednesday. Condition number fourteen. Which prohibited the overnight parking has been rewritten to state overnight parking of vehicles must be in a designated parking spot. And shall be removed within forty eight hours. And condition nineteen, which limited the applicant to thirty events in a calendar year. The applicant requested a hundred and fifty events in a calendar year. Staff suggested a maximum of one hundred and twenty events shall be permitted in any calendar year with a maximum of forty events to be held Friday through Saturday. Oh, I'm sorry, Friday through Sunday.
Is it? Thank you. Can we hear it from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Yeah, so. We, we've done extremely well. You know, a lot of weddings got pushed because of, you know, COVID. And so we've been pretty busy. Um, unfortunately, we've had to really kind of be mindful of how we scheduled certain things. You know, weddings are, are, you know, that's really what we do. Uh, we do offer, you know, we have had bridal showers, baby showers, retirement parties, things like that, but we typically don't hold those. Just because, you know, you're, it, it's from a business perspective, you know, you're not generating the same revenue. And with a cap of thirty, you know, we have to be kind of mindful of that. Uh, we've been able to, uh, hire numerous, uh. Employees, you know, that live in the county here, some, uh, people that go to Caroline County, you know, high school. Uh, a couple of the teachers work for us. Um, and until, you know, we broaden that number of events, you know, we really can't hire somebody full time, and that's what we, you know, are striving to do. The, the changes that, uh, the county, uh, were, I guess, added on to what we have, I'm, we're okay with all of those. There is one that I would like for you to really consider as you deliberate and, you know, whether you move forward with, uh, that condition or not. And that's the number of forty events on a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Today, we're limited to thirty events on those, well, Thursday through Sunday. Most weddings, obviously, are on the weekend, you know, you're seeing more people that will, uh, consider a Friday or Sunday. But that's when the majority of our events would be held. Um, and going from thirty to forty, you're really only allowing us ten more events. So we think that's really restrictive and limiting. The total number, you know, we're fine with going down to one twenty. What that really opens us up for is. You know, providing those opportunities where we can, you know, let the school come in and do different things. We actually hope, we had them change their date for the teacher appreciation thing and actually held it. We donated, um, our time in the facility and we held it at the, the, the barn. Um, and we'd like to do more stuff like that, you know, we'd like to really open it up to, and be more accessible to members of the community, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
I might have some questions later. After the public hearing, and questions to staff.
Question. Alright. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Public hearing is now is open, anybody who against. This, please come up, please. Public hearing is closed.
Okay, I have two questions for staff. Um. Do we have a definition under number seven, condition number seven? Do we have a definition of immediate family?
There is a definition of immediate family in the zoning ordinance, uh, which states immediate family shall be. A parent, grandparent, child, grandchild, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, or sibling.
Okay, good. Um. That could be by, by birth, by adoption, or by step, right, by marriage? Okay, um, how did you come up with suggesting forty events? A year on weekends?
So that number, there's fifty two weeks in a year, and forty would be one event every weekend. Or well, almost every weekend. So eighty percent.
But, uh, the applicant. You all feel like, how many events could you do in a weekend?
So currently, we, I mean, we have a Friday, Saturday wedding this year, one on Friday, one on Saturday. We have a Saturday, Sunday wedding. Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you, the spring and fall are, that's when people get married. Yeah. Yeah, so the weekends are when we're really targeting our times. Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, we're pulling revenue. We're pulling from Maryland, we're pu- we're pu- we're pulling from Williamsburg. Richmond, we're bringing people in from other. You know, areas into the county, and they're staying at hotels. They're eating at restaurants here. I mean, I'm sending them to Giuseppe's to do their rehearsal dinners. That, I'm bringing people to the county. So this is, they're bringing, they're, they're spending their money here. So I don't want to send them to Spotsylvania County. Or, I mean, now I'm taking them, I mean, this week I have already booked three weddings in the past two days. I mean, I had to leave this evening with, uh, with one of my wedding coordinators to do, finish a tour for me, and they came from Richmond. So we're pulling from all over the place. So when they come here, they're staying at our hotels, they're eating at our restaurants. You know, we've talked to all these other businesses in the county and we're working with them. I mean, we have preferred vendors that we work with in the county. So the revenue's here. So I don't want to let other businesses. Outside the county take it.
So we've got enough staff where we can turn a Friday over into a Sat- and then be ready Saturday morning. And then turn that over into a Sunday morning event. Yeah, a- and again, like I said, it's the spring. We don't do a lot, and you're not gonna do much in January, February, we really try to shy people away from this. Just because the weather's unpredictable. July, it's extremely hot, so you look at those weekends in May and June, and we double up on them.
How is the, uh, like, the septic and water holding out, you know?
So when we, when we had the system installed, we designed it specifically for a special events venue. We have two indoor plumbing, um, you know, so it, it can handle two hundred people a day. Uh, very sell, we, I mean, we've never had a two hundred person wedding yet. So most of ours are around a hundred to a hundred and fifty.
How many does it hold? The, how many?
So we can hold up to two hundred people, and the septic system can handle a two hundred person a day. Uh, we do supplement that with a PortaJohn. Just because, you know, you have an influx of people, you know, two restrooms, you have a hundred people. It's nice for them to, you know, have a alternative if they, you know, you have somebody that really has to go. Um, we typically supplement with one, if we have like, if it's a hundred and fifty people, we supplement with two. Um, just, you know, just to try to facilitate, you know, that, um. But we've not had any issues with the, uh, septic. We have a contract with, uh, Drainfield Solutions, so they come out twice a year. And inspect it, you know, because we're, you know, the last thing you want is you've got a wedding and now you've got a problem with your septic. So the drain field is, i- is very, I mean, we had it installed. Um, so really, the first uses were right after the pandemic ended. Um, you know, where, uh, restrictions were lifted and you could actually hold events. Yeah, we've been, yeah, we've got two separate drain fields, well, obviously, one for the house and then one for the, for the venue itself.
And, and one more question for staff, for now. Um, so. We only have one other wedding venue in the county that's Matapanai?
No, um.
How many do we have?
In the county, there would be.
Three?
Total of three?
There'd be three in the county and Bowling Green has one. Um, those would be the ones that I'm aware of.
Okay, alright, so the ones in the county, I mean. I know. The, each one might be a different size, but how many events are they holding per year? Do you know offhand?
The one for Mr. Terrell, I do not know offhand, um, that was done before I came, and I didn't look at that one. Uh, Mr. Olaf is allowed seventy five events of a hundred, oh no. Seventy five events of two hundred people. And a hundred events of a hundred and fifty or less. So he's got one seventy five, I believe.
Okay, but how many on weekends? Do you know?
His does not specify weekends.
Okay, and. I know he's put a bed and breakfast there and different, no, he hasn't yet.
There, there's no plans for a bed and breakfast there.
Okay, but there's a house there.
Yeah, there's a house.
Okay, um. I mean, is there, is there any major differences? Is his facility more, I, I mean, I've been to both of these facilities, but.
His, the Mr. Olaf's facility is approximately fifty six acres. It ta- it's a three acre special exception, it sits on fifty six acres. Um, so it's a little bit larger piece of property. Other than that, they're very similar.
Okay, so he gets one seventy five events a year, and it can be any day. Okay?
Yes, that's correct.
So potentially, he could have. On weekends, like, hundred and, it's at a hundred and fifty six. Fifty two times three. Hundred and fifty six.
Yes, that's right.
So potentially, he could have a hundred and fifty six on the weekends.
Potentially, he, he'd be limited on some with number, but yes.
Okay. And this one, but we're seeing on this one only forty events on the weekend. So. I don't know, I, I'd like to hear some other commissioners, their thoughts on that. Y'all know what I'm talking about, right? Matapanai. And I think most of y'all have been. By it, at least.
Mr. Chairman. Some of the. Conditions that are listed here. In my opinion, are quite, a bit restrictive. Uh, County Line Market, which is just down the road from you. They sell delicious fried chicken. But it's like telling them you can only sell twenty pieces a day. And. This, uh, is a local business. And we want to see our local businesses thrive to their fullest potential. And. What we have here is quite restrictive. And. In the interest of fairness. I don't see any reason why. The numerical conditions that Mr. Olaf has. Cannot apply here. Uh, it's true that Mr. Olaf's overall acreage is a bit larger. But the special exemption. For the venue is essentially the same. So. I would like to see the, the scope broaden as much as possible in the favor of the applicants, and I'm not saying that because of Mr. and Mrs. Sullivan. Uh, i- it's just. I think in the interest of fairness across the board. For a similar business to have the similar, uh, conditions.
I know, um. Matapanai is like right on the road. Uh, for sets of rural road, and then. I forget. This one is off of.
Lady Smith Road.
And how, how far off the road are y'all?
So the barn's probably three hundred and some feet. I would, I would say.
Okay, so similar in a way.
Yeah, they're, they're both on, on a rural road, uh, even though it's Lady Smith Road.
Actually, Lady.
Kind of in the country.
Lady Smith might be a better road than, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I would like to ask staff a couple of questions, if I may.
Yes.
My biggest concern right now is the. Lack of control. Over these parking spaces. Okay? Prime example is, as I read this. We're gonna allow overnight parking of vehicles to, in designated spots. And shall be removed in forty eight hours. No place do I see. Where these spaces are being designated. Right now, there is a hundred and thirty spaces. Does that mean you're gonna allow a hundred and thirty cars to stay there overnight?
The way it's written right now, if it was unsafe for all a hundred and thirty cars to go home, yes. All a hundred and thirty cars would be able to stay in their parking spot and be removed within the next forty eight hours.
Does Matapanai still have no overnight parking at all, period?
In their last amendment, they requested that the no overnight parking be taken away as well due to unsafe drivers. And it was removed on their permit as well.
Okay. Okay.
If I could address, you know, why we put that in. We haven't, so we've had a couple people leave their vehicle at this point, even though it says no overnight parking. We had one person get sick at an event, they went home. It was an ailment. They were, you know, throwing up. It wasn't alcohol induced, so I don't want you to think that they, they got sick. Um, we didn't want to put them on the road, uh, you know, the, for, you know, for that reason. The other is if by chance there was someone who drank too much, you know, enjoyed the festivities too much. I do not want to put someone like that on the road. Um, we feel it's much safer for them to leave a vehicle, take an Uber home or catch a ride. Uh, obviously, you know, we go by, you know, ABC per, you know, everyone has to get ABC permit. We monitor that. We're very particular about that. Uh, and we felt that, you know, the overnight parking, I mean, obviously we're not going to have a hundred and thirty vehicles. You know, we're talking like onesies, twosies and we don't want, we don't even want them there for forty-eight hours. You know, our expectation is that they're there the next day by like ten or eleven, they pick the vehicle up and go home. Um, but that's, you know, that, that's why we came back. We just felt that, you know, if, if we do this long enough, we're probably going to encounter that type of thing again and we just want to be safe.
I guess Scott, my, my problem is, um, it seems like there's an uncontrolled number here. Just like you said, it's out there on Lady Smith Road, okay? And, you know, uh, everybody's having a good time at, uh, two o'clock in the morning, they all decide that they're going to go out on Lady Smith Road. Now, I'm definitely not against any of the local industry not surviving and not doing better all the time. I'm just a little concerned about the way this is being submitted, not by you, by staff. I'm concerned that there's no real control there and that bothers me because again, yes, you're right. When you're there controlling it and you're watching all and everything, that's fine. But okay, you have to go to the ladies room or the men's room or whatever, okay? Um, I just think I'd like a little more control from staff based on this overnight parking and the number of cars that can be allowed to be there. Because I would never like to see a hundred and thirty parking spaces overnight. That's all I'm saying. And I'm not saying it's going to happen. I understand. And you wish it did happen, okay? I also understand that. I just would like more control over that issue. Now, I know staff doesn't want to go out and count cars and I understand all of that, but I'm just trying to make a little more control over these parking spaces. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
How, how many parking spaces are there? A hundred and thirty, you said?
Yeah, so I would tell you that the most vehicles we've had there was ninety-eight. So you figure families come together, there's usually two to three people, you know, for vehicles. We, I mean, we've never even been close to filling it. And that was with a wedding of a hundred and eighty-seven, you know, people that were there.
So Mr. Weaver, what, how many cars do you think, i- if you set a number?
I do not want to control a person's business in any shape, manner and form. That's not what we do as planners. As planners, we look at what we consider the right thing to do for a specific neighborhood. I was out there when Scott and his wife first started this whole thing. I was on the, I worked for the county at the time when you guys first started this whole thing. So I, I seen this for a long time. They're doing a very, very good job. My concern is to me a fact that we cannot always control the people who go in and out of a facility. And I'm not trying to do that. I'm not trying to limit this man's ability to make business. But by the same token, I would like to see, okay, I'll pick a magic number. I'd like to see half of these cars go home and the other half can stay. And you, you pick whatever number you want. I'm just, I'm trying to limit the number of cars that are going to be sitting there at two o'clock in the morning.
Sixty-five, I guess.
I'd say half of them. So, so whatever, sixty-five, uh, seventy, if you want to pick even numbers. I'm just, I'm not trying to punish these people. I'm just trying to control a situation that I've seen. Well, you remember the problems we had with Mattupanai. You guys all knew that, okay? Because at a, because at a trailer truck, the, um, the farm vehicles that went around those corners, okay? Mattupanai had nothing to do with that, but it was still on that piece of road. And I look at this road and I know Lady Smith Road like the back of my hand, guys, especially what they're doing now at Route One. I would just like to, I would like to limit the number of persons so that the county can say, hey, I think that's a controllable number and I'm not expecting Greg to go out there and measure a big car, okay? But something where I can look at Scott and his wife and say, guys, I went by there tonight. It looked good. I don't want to go by there and see a hundred and thirty cars out there at two o'clock in the morning. Sorry, just my opinion. Thank you.
Um, for me, I mean, probably that's, you know, reasonable. But the main thing for me is I think on number eighteen, I would like to go back to the blue. Which says a maximum of one hundred and fifty events shall be permitted in any calendar year. Which I think is what the applicant wanted. With no restriction on days, because that's kind of how we're handling Mattupanai. Am I correct? So that's number.
Nineteen.
Oh, okay, nineteen. Yeah, I see. The number was crossed out. Yeah. So that's the only, um, change I would like to see. No, the applicant has requested a hundred and fifty events per year, per calendar year on any day. In other words, they're not restricted to a certain amount of events on weekends. And the reason I'm suggesting that is because I believe the other two facilities, at least Mattupanai, is not restricted. They can have a hundred and seventy-five events a year on any day, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So for this facility, they were questioned a hundred and fifty events per year on any day. And so they could, they said they could probably handle three per weekend. Is what they're saying. That's when they make their money. That's the larger events.
Hundred and fifty on any day.
Yeah, right now Mattupanai is a hundred and seventy-five on any day.
Understood, understood. I'm okay with that. That doesn't bother me.
Yeah, that's what I would suggest on number nineteen and then, you know, what Mr. Weaver said on number, what, number fourteen?
Fourteen, yeah.
I mean.
Just.
If the applicant thinks that's reasonable, would you say sixty-five to seventy cars?
I mean, I would tell you that's more than reasonable. You know, I, I'm, I'm literally, we've had two vehicles is the most we've ever had stay. And I just, our, our condition says you can't have any. And so I just wanted some flexibilities where we could add something and try to accommodate people and keep people safe.
And I think that's a good suggestion. If you're going to cut down some of the number of the cars that are going to be overnight, guess what? You'll be fine.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Think that seventy or eighty is fine with them.
More than I had visioned, so.
Mr. Chair. We being consistent.
We don't want the headache of people.
Trying to be, we try to be consistent. We are trying to be consistent with the rest of the, uh, special event. That's correct. Things that are in that area, okay?
Yeah, as long as they're, I mean, they're similar in size. I know Mattupanai is larger, but I think the road is more rural, in my opinion.
So.
Mattupanai, absolutely.
If I could, I would tell you that, uh, we actually have five acres. That's special exception, you know, for this. Which, I mean, is larger than the three, whatever it is that.
By the way, the Mattupanai last amendment expanded from three to five and so they would be consistent at this point at five acres of venue.
Yeah, I know they're surrounded by that golf course, so they've just got a lot of space.
They got all kinds of land over there.
Yeah, and nobody near, you know, no houses nearby.
Well, I, I think based on the discussions and I think the applicant is willing to bend a little bit, which I'm happy about.
So I, you know, at, at this time, I, I hate to cut you off, but before you make a motion, uh, I'd like to defer, uh, until the next meeting, November meeting. I appreciate the discussion and, you know.
And I'll fly with that, Scott. If you would prefer to defer to the November meeting, then.
And staff will make the changes to condition nineteen for Dr. Horton and condition fourteen for Mr. Weaver. Uh, prior to the application coming back.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Have a motion? We need a motion on that?
Yes, you would have to motion to accept the applicant's deferral.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We accept the applicant's deferral to November seventeenth.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I forgot to say thank you, Frederick.
So the next public hearing is tax amendment. Are we doing all of them at one time or just one separate?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We will handle all three text amendments at one time and hold one public hearing for all three text amendments. If a member of the public would like to speak for, uh, for or against those text amendments, then they can do so at all three at one, one time.
Tax amendment, T X T dash oh four twenty twenty-two. T X T dash oh five twenty twenty-two. T X T oh six dash twenty twenty-two. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attached for your public hearing are three advertised text amendments to repeal the adopted solar energy regulations as previously discussed by the planning commission. T X T zero four twenty-two repeals Article Four, Section five point four zero and eliminates minor solar energy projects as uses permitted by special exception permit in the Rural Preservation District. T X T zero five twenty-two repeals Article fifteen, Section eight point V development standards and eliminates standards for minor solar energy projects. T X T zero six twenty-two repeals Article fifteen, Section twenty-three and eliminates the solar energy overlay district regulations. Commonwealth of Virginia is studying regulations and issues with solar regulations and projects at the state level, including stormwater management. Given that any regulatory changes are likely to be six months or more in the future, the board felt that the county should shield itself from new applications until the state finishes its review and any new regulations are implemented. If there are any questions, staff will be happy to answer.
Mr. Chairman, if you please. Question of staff?
Yes.
Uh, and maybe even legal. Uh, if these text amendments are approved for repeal and they are passed by the Board of Supervisors, will that in effect put a stop to any solar projects in the county until further action?
I'm going to defer to the county attorney to answer these questions.
Sure, yes. If, if these ordinances are all, the amendments are adopted, it would delete sm- minor and major solar projects as a use in the county. You, you couldn't do it anymore. Um, but there are, there are a variety of different ways to do that. The one that's been referred to you is complete repeal. Um, so that's removal of all the language that's been crafted to put into the zoning ordinance for solar projects. And staff just went over it for you, but in short, what you have, there are three sections in the zoning ordinance dealing with solar projects and that's why you have three text amendments. The first is listing minor solar projects as a u- permitted use in the RP district. So that this First Amendment would just delete that as a use. So, you know, there's the list of uses permitted by special exception in the, the RP district. You know, there's all farm, shop, whatever. It would delete minor solar. That's the relatively easy one. The next one is there's development standards for minor solar projects. So unlike a lot of other uses, solar projects in the ordinance have a, a fully spelled out list of development standards by which they're approved, maintained and then decommissioned. You would delete all that language. If you delete all that, there, there are so far three projects that had minor solar projects that have already been approved. So if you delete, delete as a use and delete the development standards, you would have those three projects so far would be, uh, non-conforming uses, right? So they would be, they, they would be, uh, subject to the law that was in place at the time they were approved, but they'd be non-conforming moving forward. Um, and then the last one is the major. And for major projects, there's a whole overlay district. So it's not just like the RP, it's not just the use in, in the RP district. The way the ordinance was crafted, it created an overlay district, a specific area where projects of this size, which are twenty to one hundred and fifty megawatts, can be cited and then it has all the development standards for those. So you would delete all that. Um, the alternative that's not before you, but the alternative to complete repeal in both those, in both the development standards for minor and the, um, the overlay district for major, there's a megawatt cap as part of the ordinance. And right now it's like, I think, six hundred megawatts for major, a hundred megawatts for minor. The other thing that you could consider, it's not before you, but it's relevant to, to what is before you, is that you could lower that cap and, and in effect stop solar in that way as well, as opposed to throwing out, or, you know, deleting all the law. You could just lower the cap to say, well, we're at our cap, whatever that may be. So those would, those are the two ways that would stop more solar applications from being approved.
But in essence, would that put a stop to Whalebone, Shad and Muske? The, the three projects that had.
That would be up to the board. It, you know, I think depending on the timing, um, you know, from a legal perspective, you don't have vested rights in an application or in the existence of a use. You have vested rights in an approval. So the three projects that have been approved have vested rights in their approval. That's why they become non-conforming. Uh, the board could, you know, I think, decide whether to allow projects that are already in the pipeline, have already had public hearings to proceed to a vote, even if the, the amendment were adopted. Or to say, I'm sorry, we changed our ordinance and they're not allowed. I think that would be a board decision.
Haven't, haven't they already been approved, though?
Three have.
Yeah, so are.
Those, those ones are, those ones have vested.
Yeah, that's Shad, Whalebone and.
Muske.
Muske. I think they've already been approved. I don't think, I don't think they can be voted on anymore. They've already been voted on.
That's correct. So, so tho- those three, if you were to, uh, recommend repeal, would become non-conforming uses.
Yeah, but they're still.
They would be allowed.
Allowed, yeah. Um, yeah, and, um, I mean, I know the state is coming out with some new information, you know, environmental information next year to help us, you know, deal with these solar farms. And we need to do something, you know, kind of put them on hold until we can see what the state's going to say. However, I feel like we need some type of ordinance to control, like decommissioning and things for the three that have already been approved and the Board of Supervisors mi- might approve a couple more. I don't know. Because they're already in the pipeline. What does staff think about, um, the suggestion of putting a cap, lowering the cap? Would that put us, you know, put everything on hold until we can hear what the state has to say?
Again, I'm going to defer to the county attorney to answer that question.
Okay.
That would be, that, that would be a separate, a separate text amendment. So we'd, it would have to be a separate public hearing. The only reason I raise it here is, uh, Mr. Schwartz asked, how would you stop future projects? And there, I wanted to make clear that this is one way, but there would be other ways to do it. Um, so you, that would be one way to do it. This would be another, I think, um, So you, that would be one way to do it. This would be another, I think, Dr. Horton, the, the, the approved projects, you know, if you were to repeal, I think you could in- instruct staff to some, you know, put into the, into the zoning ordinance a, a statement to the effect of, you know, any non-conforming solar projects that continue are subject to the ordinance in effect as of the date of their approval. But that just, that means you're just stuck with the decommissioning language as it exists now. And if in ten years you wanted to amend it, you'd have to re-adopt a new ordinance, you know, you, you would just be stuck with the existing law, if that makes sense. The alternative would be to do a more tailored approach where you'd say either lower the megawatt cap or, you know, delete, you know, remove the uses everywhere from the ordinance, if that makes sense.
So, quick question, I just want to follow up because I want to make sure I've got it right in my mind. So if we repeal these, those three that have been approved, they'd be non-conforming, and they would be subject to the regulations and ordinances that were in place at the time that they were approved?
Yes, I think, I think that is the law, although frankly, it would open up a little bit of ambiguity there, right? Because if, because they would say, well, I thought, I thought this is gone. And I, so I do think it's prudent to, in some way, make clear that that those approved projects are non-conforming and subject to the zoning ordinance in effect as of the date that they were approved. When you have, you know, non-conforming uses generally are disfavored by the law. So there's lots of restrictions on them, and actually our zoning ordinance has a whole section on non-conforming uses. And when you're non-conforming, you don't have the right to do anything you want. You're limited in your non-conformity to what you were legally doing at the date that the amendment was passed. So I think the law would be, they would be, they would be limited to the ordinance in effect at the date that their application was, was passed. With that said, it does create a little bit of ambiguity and confusion for the property owners, particularly in the future, because if they look at our zoning ordinance to say, okay, what, what are the rules for, for my minor solar energy project, and they see nothing, the implication will be, I guess there are none, right? Beyond what's in my special exception.
I think we need something.
It would be prudent to, to put, you know, I think you could, you could repeal still and say, but there, you would want to instruct staff that if, with the repeal, there needs to be something in the ordinance that states non-conforming uses are subject to the, the law in effect as of the time of their non-conformity.
And that would include the three that are already approved, plus any more that the Board of Supervisors would approve, because there is three more applications?
There's one, two.
I think Frog Level pulled out. Four more applications then, okay?
Right, and, and so those, and, and, you know, depending on the timing, you know, some of those are up for hearing in September. So they could get a vote even before there's a vote on this, depending on how things, the timing works out.
So I don't know if, if we, if staff needs more time to look at that suggestion or speak with Mr. Fincham?
Yeah, so if that is the route that you're interested in going, then we will need to revisit these, rewrite the text amendments, and have another public hearing.
We, I, I don't know what the other commissioners think. I just think we need something for, you know, the, the solar farms that have already been approved, plus the four applicants that may or may not be approved.
Carol, I think you're a hundred percent right. Having looked at this very carefully, I guess what happened was, everything with the solar projects was moving along at a great pace, okay? And then all of a sudden the state came in and said, no, wait, 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 there's something wrong here, this isn't working. And, and we all know how it came about. I just look at this and I, I feel the same way, and I know you guys don't need any extra work, I understand it. But I just feel, when I'm reading this, I'm unclear of exactly what we're attempting to do with these projects that have been approved or the ones that are still in the pipeline. So I think I would need more clarification, I'm sorry to do that.
Yeah, well, and I, I can, I can state pretty clearly that the, the ones that have been approved would be non-conforming. And I think legally, they would be bound by the ordinance in, in place as they, as, so this ordinance, the one you're looking at right now. That is one route to go. And, and as far as the ones that are before the board but not yet voted on, that, that is technically speaking, what's the term, what the term grandfathering, that's usually what's used to refer to non-conforming uses. It's a separate term, and it, that's what it means. It's in the pipeline and it's up to the board as to whether to allow it to proceed under what would be then the old law or say, well, these are no longer allowed, so unfortunately your application is, is moot. So that would be a board decision. So, you know, those are options, but there are, there are a variety of ways to do this. But one option would be, what's before you, repeal, and then make clear in the, in the, whatever is implementing, implements the repeal, that non-conforming solar projects are subject to the law in effect at the time of their approval.
So I, I'm just going to make a couple of statements. I'm I'm more worried about the other applicants that may come before us if we still maintain the ordinance or the language in the ordinance that we could get an influx or more that would come through. I think repealing these would at least cap it at this particular point. I think we could probably come back with, if I understand correctly, we could come back with some specific language, some other text that we could provide that to, whether it's at the board level, to the applicants that have gone through. So they have a clear understanding that they are subject to the ordinance that was in place at the time they received approval. To me, that seems like a good path. If we don't act now, I think we would run the risk of maybe somebody else coming in and then we'd have to add another to that list. Just my thoughts.
And I guess just as a procedural matter, I, I don't want us to get too far ahead. We still need to open this to public comment, just as a reminder.
Well, any more questions, Mr. Taylor? I just, I feel as if we've let the, the horse out of the barn already, and now we're trying to close the door. And I just, I, I think it's the wrong way to go about it, just my opinion, okay? I don't like when we go through and do something and then all of a sudden the board decides to shield the county. And I understand the protection, believe me, I do, okay? But I just think when we sat as commissioners and listened to all those applications and all those people went around in circles and we asked them all kinds of questions, we beat up on them pretty good, okay? Now, I'm not saying all those should have been approved or disapproved. But I just think now we're trying to change what we already started to do, and I'll tell you right now, I will not be in favor of this, whatever proposals being, if this is the proposal they're going to put out, that they want to eliminate everything, I'm not in favor. Okay, Shay, nevermind.
Any more questions to the staff? Public hearing is open. Anybody forward or against it, please come up?
I'm John Powell, Mattupny District, West Carolina. Can't really remember which one. Lady Smith, Camps Creek. I have no real vested interest in regards to solar power as a consumer and/or a proponent for building it. However, I will say this, I work in regulatory, in, in a regulatory agency. I know the law for my regulations that I look into. They don't change that often. So when you can change them for the betterment, I think that's a good thing. But if you're changing them to put a stop on this, to, to protect something, to protect your own, you know, legality in this, I don't think that's really, really the right way to go. I mean, yeah, you already let the cat out of the bag, you have these regulations in place. If you put a cap to it because you're waiting for what the state's going to do, the state might not never decide to do anything. We know how slow it can be down in Richmond, it can be very slow. So why put businesses that want to come to Caroline out of, out of business? Why not give them approvals for these land uses? Why get rid of this standard? I see that you want to try to do with whatever the state's going to do, but again, who knows when they're going to do what they're going to do? Who knows when they're going to actually implement anything? Gosh, we're what, how many months into, to, to, what, eight months into twenty twenty-two, and they said, oh, we're going to be looking into it? We've been through how many special sessions in the state, and they haven't really addressed this at all? So again, how, when are they going to address it? So why hamper, hamper, or delay these businesses that want to come in and try to do this? Again, I have no vested interest. I figure I just talk because it seemed like an interesting conversation. But again, I, I, I work in regulation all the time. So again, it's, it's one of those things. If you can't, if you want to put a cap on something that's already being allowed, just because the state hasn't said yea or nay to it, then you're going to be potentially sending away a lot of business. Because let's say a county is like, well, the state's not telling us what we can or cannot do with it. Yeah, they're going to, they're saying they're going to do something. Why don't we have something in place for now and change it later? So that's, that's my two cents on that one. You know, like I said, no vested interest, just thinking about potential businesses coming into the county and bringing in some, some more tax relief to the county in a lot of ways. So that's my time. If y'all have any questions for me, I'm going to ask later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, good evening, commissioners. My name is Mary Hodge. I'm a proud resident of the Bowling Green District. And let me preface, preface my comments by thanking my current representatives for listening to their citizens' concerns and not voting for any of the solar projects that have come before both boards. And I feel like you may have let the horse out of the, out of the barn, but it turned into a monster, and I have no problem with putting that monster back in the barn. I don't buy other representatives' arguments that the state is mandating this for us to put in the county, nor do I feel that solar is a valid means of preserving land for the future, for China's future perhaps. A year ago, I did not know that my property was in the solar overlay district, and I would certainly appreciate my input now in order to be excluded. Do I have to move away from my beautiful land that I worked all my life to cherish and protect? Will I be forced involuntarily into a neighborhood of barbed wire topped fences like a POW camp? Will my property be assessed at a lower rate because my well may be contaminated by heavy metals leached from the nearby panels into my groundwater? I'm hopeful that the new governor, Governor Yonkin will undo his predecessor's dirty deals with Dominion and work to protect Virginia's and our Carolines agricultural and forest lands from solar desecration. And we citizens are trusting you leaders to put a wall around Caroline and protect us from what I deem a corrupt and wasteful industry. There was a recent meeting nearby in Car- in King George, well, I'm sorry, there was a meet, recent meeting here regarding defining battery storage. But I don't think you commission members were able to like make a knowledgeable decision about it, so it was deferred. But there was a recent meeting in King George with their planning commission where they denied approval of a, a solar and battery storage facility that was proposed at the Birchwood defunct power plant. So I feel hopeful that times will be changing away from solar and towards a more cleaner and efficient form of energy production. I appreciate the Board of Supervisors for returning this ordinance back to the planning commission and trust that we can regroup. As I think a year ago, none of us were fully educated on the huge implications rezoning our preserved agricultural lands to solar industrial factories would impact our county and our homes. So I trust you, I would urge you to repeal the solar ordinance. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We are, the County of Carolina is under no obligation by state law to allow solar facilities in this county. That may or may not change, I don't know. I do know that we are the gatekeepers for the county. We're here to protect the land, protect our people. And I don't want to be melodramatic about this, and with all due respect to my fellow commissioners, I see absolutely no reason to kick this can further down the road. The state legislature will probably be making changes. I do not see any point in asking staff to formulate some new texts for us to go through the process of discussing, planning, sending to the Board of Supervisors, only to have to come back and change them at a later date to conform with the state regulations. With that said, I would like to make a motion, and I hope I have the proper wording on this card. Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of the repeal of T X T zero four twenty twenty-two, T X T zero five twenty twenty-two.
Ms. Super Short.
Are you singular?
Yeah, one at a time.
I recommend that T X T zero four twenty twenty-two be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval to repeal.
Second.
Let's do a roll call, vote.
If you can have any discussion on, on the motion first.
Any discussion on the motion.
I, I just, because already three have been passed, I still have concerns of losing control over those three. I mean, and, and just to let the public know, the, the reason the state, we're waiting on the state is because the state, it's an environmental thing, the state wants to make sure that these solar farms, the runoff is not creating gullies and, there's a problem with the runoff, creating erosion. So, I mean, I think probably we're going to have enough solar farms once the Board of Supervisors is finished with what they're going through right now. But I would like to have some control over what they have approved, and they've approved three. Just my thoughts.
So with that, what, yeah, if I, I'd like to add in, I think we've been blessed with some of this added information. We're not too far down the road where we can't take that information that we're going to get from the state, really look at it, and maybe creating or modifying the ordinances at a future time is the right thing to do. But for right now, I think we're in the best interest of, you know, for all the constituents in the county that we take these actions. You know, when you, we talk about runoff, I've, you know, read a lot about solar over the last year. You know, it's not just the runoff, it's, you know, when these panels, you know, when it's time for them to be replaced, they all run about the same time in that twenty, twenty-five year span. And what I worry about is if you've got all of these solar fields that have been implemented or started right within the same couple of years, what are you going to do with these thousands of solar panels that are going to, you know, run their lifespan? You know, are we going to be able to send those, you know, we don't have a landfill here, so we're sending stuff to King George. Are they going to continue to accept that? And I just think it's the right time to, you know, take a step back, look at what we're doing, and making sure we're going in the right direction for the county.
And, and that's one reason why I want to have some control over it, because the, these ordinances do address some of that storage for those panels, because we don't want them out there in the environment. So I, I just want to. So I, I just want to have some control over it. I want some ordinance to control what's already been passed.
Dr. Horton, I understand your control issue. I, I really do. And I empathize with you on that. Our supervisor Floyd Thomas made the comment, I believe at the last meeting or the meeting before that, that they, the board, the county, would like to still have some control. I'm willing to look into the future and say that once these solar facilities are granted state and/or federal permits, Caroline County is not going to have any control. Just like what happened with the self-tower sites, no control. The control was completely taken over by the state. And that, I, I fear is a big issue. It's going to be a big issue, not only for us, but for our grandchildren as well.
And you think that's a possibility?
Yes, ma'am, I think anything is a possibility. I think it's a possibility.
Well, yeah, anything is a possibility.
That these solar facilities could do well. The odds, I think, in my opinion, are that they will not, that there are going to be problems. The EPA or DEQ have only two qualified inspectors for the whole state. So when we begin to have problems in Caroline County, I think the response is going to be slow. And what is DEQ or EPA going to do? We're going to get, they're going to give them a year, six months to correct a problem that is ongoing. This dog is going to come back to bite us.
I think solar, I mean, solar farms in general, I mean, I think they're a temporary thing. I think there will be a new form of energy, maybe within 50 years. And that's the lifespan of these, these farms are 35 to 50 years, so. Yeah. So I think limiting the amount and controlling them, you know, is our best bet. I don't know if the state will override us eventually and say, no, you cannot limit. But I, I mean, I don't think they'll be around forever anyway, just like cars won't be around forever.
The, just to throw this out, Duke Energy, which is probably the third largest energy company in this nation, their CEO was on Fox Business News a few days ago. And during her interview, she made the announcement that Duke Energy is selling their solar interest and that they're going to modular nuclear facilities. Now, that's going to be another debate, I agree. But when you take a company as big as Duke Energy and they're going to sell out, there's a reason for that.
Well, the, yeah. I mean, these companies sell off portions of their companies from time to time.
Yeah, the LLCs will sell out, but Duke Energy.
I mean, Dominion's done that too, right?
Pardon?
Dominion's done that. They've sold parts of their company. They've bought parts of other companies. That's just the nature of the beast.
I agree. But like I said, I just think this dog is going to come back and bite us in the rear end in the long run. And that's, like in the words of Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about that.
Have we got a motion on the floor?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion on the floor to approve the repeal right now of TXT 04 2022 that has been seconded. If you all are done with discussion, we'll proceed with a roll call vote. Mr. Weaver? Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Minor?
Yes.
Dr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion to repeal TXT 04 carries.
Mr. Chairman, I have another motion, if you please. Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TX 05 2022, I recommend that TX 05 2022, and this is for a repeal, be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, let's proceed with the roll call vote. Mr. Weaver?
No.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Minor?
Yes.
Dr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if you please. Whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TX 06 2022 for repeal, I recommend that TX 06 2022 for repeal be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Mr. Weaver?
No.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Minor?
Yes.
Dr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Any and all matters?
Yes. Trying to get ready to sit in. Any and all matters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a few any and all matters tonight. So the stapled packet that was handed out to you is the amendments to the Chesapeake Bay ordinance for Caroline County. Along with the single sheet that I handed out to explain any and alls. So there is a text amendment to address the Chesapeake Bay ordinance after our DEQ review. And we have made the changes requested by the state authority. And we need to get them approved in order to meet our timeline with the state. So in this packet, we've provided you with all of our changes. We're asking that you look them over over the next couple of weeks. And staff would like for you to authorize a public hearing for the September 22nd Planning Commission meeting. And we also would like to have a work session to go over all the changes with you guys prior to that meeting. Staff is suggesting September 15th for the work session to discuss the changes so that we can have a public hearing and a motion at the September 22nd meeting.
The 15th is a Thursday?
Correct, it would be the Thursday before the regularly scheduled meeting.
I'm okay with that, if everybody else?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
What time on the 15th?
That would be up to your availability. Staff was, was originally suggesting 6:30?
Good, good time.
Okay, so 6:30 on September 15th, a work session to discuss the changes to the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. At the end of this meeting, you would motion to adjourn to that work session.
And you will provide surf and turf with baked potatoes.
That could be discussed. With that being said, with the work session being scheduled, we would still need you to make a motion to authorize the public hearing for the amendments to the Chesapeake Bay ordinance for September 22nd.
All right, you need that motion right now?
Yes.
I, I would like to make a motion that we authorize staff to advertise for a public hearing on the Chesapeake Bay overlay district amendments to be held, the public hearing to be held September 22nd?
Second. 15th.
Oh, no, no. This is for the public hearing on the 22nd.
The work session is 15th. And so public hearing is at a regular meeting on September 22nd.
Yes.
We had a second, correct?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second item under any and all matters tonight is still regarding the Chesapeake Bay ordinance changes that DEQ requested. This is a change to the parking ordinance in regards to the DEQ changes requested. Again, we can discuss these changes at the September 15th work session. However, staff is asking to authorize a public hearing for the text amendment regarding the parking regulations and the Chesapeake Bay changes for September 22nd.
Is there a motion for that?
Yes.
So moved.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The third any and all matter tonight is regarding the subdivision ordinance roadway width. And this item is a text amendment regarding width of roads and subdivisions to alleviate concerns brought about by fire and EMS in accordance with design. So staff is requesting Planning Commission to authorize a public hearing for September 22nd regarding minimum roadway width in major subdivisions.
So we're going to be here all night on the 22nd?
Surf and turf.
Okay, I make a motion that we authorize staff to advertise that public hearing also for the 22nd.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The fourth item tonight is a text amendment regarding turnarounds on dead end streets in subdivisions to alleviate concerns brought about by fire and EMS in accordance with subdivision design. Staff is requesting that you authorize a public hearing for this text amendment for September 22nd at your next meeting.
I make a motion to add that to the public hearing on the 22nd.
Did we get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carry.
The last text amendment on any and all matters provides, needs a little bit more explanation. So there's a little bit more information there. This item is a text amendment that's under consideration regarding special events facilities. This text amendment would allow for a special events facility to apply to the Board of Supervisors for approval to host an event that is not currently covered under the special events facility, except special exception definition and standards. Right now, special events cannot have any ticketed events or be open to the public. This would allow a special, a permitted special events facility to go to the board to request to host one of those types of events. Staff is requesting Planning Commission consider authorizing a public hearing for this text amendment. The Board of Supervisors has not referred this text amendment to you at this time for consideration. However, staff feels that it will be referred to you shortly by the Board of Supervisors. If the Planning Commission does not want to authorize this text amendment, then we will take it to the Board of Supervisors to see if they would like to refer it to you or not.
Could I ask a quick question, Mr. Pennington? Would a ticketed event count against for a facility? For example, if they had a, a cap of 150 events, would a ticketed event count as one of the 150?
The text amendment hasn't been fully written at this time. However, considering that you'd be going to the board to get permission to host that event, I do not believe it would be counted against your events. Unless the text amendment ends up being written that way.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm okay with it. I'll make a motion that, you know, you advertise it for public hearing.
Second.
All in. Let me do a.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Does he need to abstain or recuse? Or does he need to make any kind of statement, Mr. McKenzie?
I mean, I think you could, if you just abstain. What's, what's the, what's the conflict?
He owns a special events facility and this would be a text amendment for special events facilities. So it directly affects.
I think, I mean, I haven't done a coy analysis, but I think that you can just choose not to participate. This doesn't, it, this affects more than, more than three to five people. So the group's bigger.
Okay, so Mr. Sullivan has abstained. For the others, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing else for any and all tonight.
Thank you. Again, a motion to adjourn to the September 22nd meeting?
15th.
Continue, continue to the 15th.
Continue to the work session on the 15th.
That's correct.
So moved.
Second. Aye.
I get my dates straight.